Where you from, where you from nigga, where you from? Where you from, where you from nigga, where you from? Where I'm from and they love to hate, where I'm from they hit the interstate. Where I'm from and they keep it trippy, murder rate, high as still a kill. Where you from, where you from nigga, where you from? Where you from, where you from nigga, where you from?
Hey man, say man, what's the play man? So who we have here today? Hey man, say man, it's your brother none other than shout, don't know what they thought, you understand me, we checking in live. Uh owner of the alkaline hour herbal trap store, I'm saying so we big trapping big herbs. Yeah, healthy herbs, uh what else, you know candidate for Dallas city council district, hey be setting the record straight. If you wanna make history, I got a way to participate. Get it?
Yeah, man, I appreciate you coming down to sit down with us, man, this is definitely of a milestone for me, you know what I'm saying? And definitely in terms of my journalism and all that, like I was telling you earlier, um it might even be year to date, you know what I'm saying? I'm watching you on real life street stars last year, you know what I'm saying? A little bit after, um well not, maybe a little bit after the, after the George Floyd thing, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, that's after that.
Yeah, so um so just watching you then I was like watch just your growth and kind of, you know what I'm saying? Got to your background then to have you here, you know what I'm saying? I just want to listen, I appreciate it, you know what I'm saying?
Appreciate y'all, showing love.
And I'm a little razzle dazzle, you know what I'm saying, um like I told you in the past, I believe in what you got going, you know what I'm saying? Some of this shit, you know what I'm saying? So, so for those that don't know, where you from, man?
Man, I'm from the cliff, Oak Cliff, Texas, you know what I'm saying, I grew up in Wynwood.
Yeah, so one thing I ask everybody from the cliff, what is this Oak Cliff business?
Hey man, say man, you know shit, like I seen, uh shit, you know niggas try to be act too hard, you know what I'm saying? Niggas try to act like something they not, but you know, I guess in reference to, uh you know, the culture, you know what I'm saying? The culture of Oak Cliff, it get real sticky out there, you know what I'm saying? Depending on, uh you know, who you associate with, uh your background and, and what type of lane you trying to be in, you know? Uh I feel like it's different lanes to be in the Oak Cliff, you know what I'm saying? And people that, uh you know, uh gravitate to the Oak Cliff business shit, you know what I'm saying? They uh referencing in my, from my perspective, you know Trap Boy, uh you know, real, super real cliff nigga. Hands down, you know what I'm saying, and it's just like kind of energy, you know, right now.
Yeah, oh really, you know what I'm saying? So, um you should ask people about the different parts of Dallas, like kind of stereotypically, but even the cliff has different parts to the cliff. You know what I'm saying? So go ahead and put us, put us on game about that.
I mean, you said different parts of the cliff, like as far as what?
Well, in terms of, I mean, you got the senior hills, but even like some people don't even know, they're like million dollar homes in Oak Cliff.
Oh yeah, 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 nah, for sure, sure, like, you know what I'm saying? So I ran for office, uh two years ago for my first time, I was twenty five, I ran for district three. And you know, out there, you know, you gotta knock these doors, that's how you gonna win, so I didn't know, like, it was like big, big nasty, fat, stupid, nice homes, you know what I'm saying, like especially in the Keyswood area, you know, our keys, uh man, it really, but like it's, it's some money out there, you know what I'm saying? So like you do got the different parts, you know, um but niggas just don't know, like it's money out there in Oak Cliff. And a lot of times, uh it's, it's old black money, a lot of times it's, it's white folks in the cliff, you know what I'm saying?
Like from my, from my knowing, it was like a lot of Mexican money.
No, it is a lot of Mexicans too, I'll get it twisted, I was finna get there, uh the Mexicans though, like they, they creating infrastructure for themselves, you know what I'm saying? And it's crazy, cause um a lot of them, you know, no disrespect to anybody, but a lot of them, like black people, we came over here first, you know what I'm saying? Like, yeah, they say this is, used to be part of Mexico, but as far as America, you know what I'm saying? We came here before a lot of these people did, but just to see how, uh how close knit, uh Hispanics or Mexican, whatever you wanna label them.
Or even immigrants in a certain sense.
I mean, yeah, immigrants too, you know what I'm saying? But we didn't migrate here, you know what I'm saying, we weren't immigrants, you know what I'm saying? Niggas did not migrate over here, we did not choose to come over here. But we been over here before the immigrants, but the immigrants have a lot more infrastructure, you know what I'm saying? A lot more unity and they, they're, they're building their own community, so yeah, you got a whole lot of Mexican parts, uh Hispanic, Mexican parts of the cliff, you know what I'm saying? And they doing their thing, just like we could, you feel me? But we got a lot of, uh dish unity, you know what I'm saying? We got a lot of, uh shit, you know bullshit, we stuck on.
Yeah, so like, you know what I'm saying, so alright, so where did you kind of start? I mean, we know we started in the cliff, you know what I'm saying, but I'm trying to like, alright, where does somebody so articulate, you know what I'm saying? You think it differently, you actually usually wouldn't think that it come out of the cliff, you know what I'm saying? So how kind of got you on the line to even, even wanna even be a community activist and turn around to give it, you know what I'm saying? Uh what made you?
I mean, I ain't gonna hold you, but like, you know, I was a part of all this shit, you know what I'm saying, uh until I got into college, you know? I did the, uh community college thing, went to Cedar Valley, and uh I ain't gonna hold you, man, it was like a chick, you know what I'm saying? That kind of Erica Vado my ass, you know what I'm saying? I was coming out there looking like goddamn me, uh Andre back in the day, and I came out with the turban and air wrap, you know? She put that, that voodoo woman, bro, brother, you hear me? But like, you know, that was cool, cause I never heard concepts before it was her, before I met with her, like I never heard concepts about like, you know, black people are great, you know what I'm saying, and we are ancient race and, you know, at first I thought like, I literally thought nigga, we came from slavery, you hear me? You know what I'm saying? So when uh this, this woman introduced me to something way before like what we was doing before slavery, like that just kind of got my gears turning. And then also at the same time, you know, I was taking a history course, I think her name was, my teacher's name was Latricia Atkins, I, I forgot her name, but, you know, my, my, uh history teacher, she was making, uh, uh history interest or black history interest. When we finally came to black history, she just made it like, like it was like not cool, like y'all know who Langston Hughes is? Y'all know who Frederick Douglass is or not Frederick Douglass? She wasn't going that far back, she was going to like the nineteen twenties, nineteen thirties, nineteen forties, and she just made it like, like damn near like I was low key lame, cause I ain't know, know these figures. That's kind of starting, you know?
And in a sense, that's, that's kind of cool, you know what I'm saying? Um I did my elementary school in DC, so, um but I was born here in Texas, so it kind of turned me on when I moved back here and it was like, we don't learn about no black history? Like, like, so why do you think that's kind of like that in the schools, or like why, like you know what I'm saying?
Well, we in the south, you know what I'm saying, so DC, I guess that would be considered more north, you know, and I know the culture.
They think they're the south, but they, you know, we look at that as north.
So it is the south?
Yeah, they feel like the Mason Dixon, anything below Philadelphia, but they, they think that's the south, but what, to what we know the actual south to be.
Right, and then you know Texas, you know what I'm saying, Texas is like a super racist state, you know what I'm saying? And, and you know, with racism, a lot of times it's institutional, which means it's, it's in the, the buildings, it's in the, uh, what we consider normal, like racism is there from the schools to the banks to the churches, the religion, all that, it's embedded in it. So I think like, um as far as the curriculum, uh what we learn in schools, uh has that, you know, that, that racist agenda in it as well.
So I'm glad that you, um that you broke up that racism as a system, cause most people don't even know what racism is, they know loosely what it is, you know what I'm saying?
Niggas get, uh prejudice and racism confused.
Confused.
It's not prejudice, it's like I can call you a nigga, or I can call you a cracker or whatever, but that does not stop you from, from obtaining generational wealth. That does not stop you from getting loan, that does not devalue your property, uh, uh, you know what I'm saying? So, uh it's, it doesn't stop you from progressing. Also, uh racism is the power to negatively affect an entire group of people, or an entire race. Yeah, you know what I'm saying? And so me calling you a cracker does not do that, you know what I'm saying? That's just prejudiced, I just don't, I'm prejudging, you know what I'm saying? But racism is nigga, we're holding your ass back, you feel me? So, and they say black people don't necessarily have the power to be racist.
Yeah, I'm glad you said that, because I was gonna get into, get into there, like do you feel like black people can be racist? Cause they feel like we're not in the, well, some people say we're not in a position to be racist, cause we don't have the ability to.
Right, that, that's it, like it depends on what your definition of racism is, but racism in itself, like I said, is the power to negatively affect an entire group of people. So like I said, if I'm calling you a cracker or calling you a white boy or, or whatever, that's not stopping you from passing on wealth, obtaining wealth yourself and passing it to your children.
Yeah, I'm saying, um earlier today, I posted a post, I think you seen it, of the boy in Plano who was forced to drink some pee.
Right.
Um it was disheartening, it was, I was some, I didn't think stuff like that was kind of happening in twenty twenty. So, um I actually, I, I grew up in Plano too, so it's like, I, I could see it, but it's like even wow in the twenty twenty one, what was your reaction to that situation?
Man, uh you know, I ain't gonna hold you, but like shit like that, I can't watch, you know what I'm saying, like I can't do that. But my whole reaction to it is like, I don't know why niggas be tripping, so it's like, we can blame the white folks, we can do all that, we can keep playing, pointing the finger and all that shit, but, but the reality is, if that child's parents didn't feel like it's, the grass is greener in Plano and, uh he didn't, they didn't wanna be amongst their people, then that's, that's what you are putting not only yourself into, but you putting your children, your offspring into that shit too. So it's like y'all gotta take responsibility and accountability, is if you gonna move out the hood and then that's like the, the goal and the, the situation, then it's like you also, also gotta take in consideration that the grass might seem greener, it might be greener over there, but that green might not be grass, it might be turf. It might not be real, you know, reality, so it's like, you know, we gotta hold ourselves accountable too. It's like the white folks, they gonna do what they do, like they showed us nigga, since we've been here in this country, they don't fuck with us, I don't give a fuck. It's, it's some cool white people out there, all that, yeah, you know what I'm saying? But as a whole, as a group, as a race of people, they show you, they do not want to, uh, share space with you. And it's, if you know that, and you're going out there because you feel like their community is better and their school and their education is better, then that's your motherfucking fault, you know what I'm saying, me? And unfortunately, the kid has nothing, that's not the kid's fault, you know what I'm saying? That's not your children's fault, that's your fault as a parent to understand that. Uh, uh it, it goes worse, even South Dallas in the forties, bruh, they was, um, white folks was bombing black people's houses in South Dallas. Bombing they motherfucking houses, you hear me? And the reality behind this is, and it's so cold blooded, like these white folks is so crazy, bro, to where, and mind you, these people's children and grandchildren are still alive today walking around. But anyways, um at that time in the forties and, and, and the early nineties, they didn't have, uh, um, you know segregated housing, where they didn't have communities for black people for the most part, they had, it was either the slums or that was it, you know what I'm saying? So they had to, people, um, who, uh, who were, you know, came from the war, who had GI money, the GI Bill money, they could afford, you know, something different, or, or, or black professionals, um, who could afford different, they didn't wanna live in the slums, obviously, so they only had a choice to go to the white community. There wasn't like a predominantly black, uh affluent area, so they had to go to the white communities, you know what I'm saying? Which South Dallas at the time was one of them, East Dallas at the time was one of them, you know what I'm saying? Uh, uh, West Dallas at the time was one of them, Oak Cliff was as well, you know what I'm saying? So but anyways, these white people was so fucked up that, uh, you know, uh, somebody will move in their community and what they would do, they'll bomb your motherfucking house. Bomb, bruh, so we just talking about drinking piss right now, you know what I'm saying? Which is tragic, the kid is gonna have, be traumatized and have to heal from that as an adult, but what, what is taking place, the racism that, uh, and prejudice that they're exhibiting on us today is a, a way less extreme version of what they were doing to our, uh, our grandparents and our parents, uh, you know, just a few decades ago. So, but, but my whole sentiment, bro, is we need our own community, we gotta go back to that, that segregation shit, or excuse me, integration shit, was, was one of the worst things that we could have, could have done, because at one time in our, in our neighborhood though, we had, uh, uh, black dentists, black doctors, black owned grocery stores, black cleaners, black, uh, uh, you know, uh, uh, people who relate to us, you know what I'm saying? We didn't have to go to our, uh, outside of our community and spend our dollar. It, it, our shit circulated i- in our community like it does in the Jewish community or in other community. So, uh, with integration came the, uh, you know, the lack of, you know, uh.
Our own.
Sure like that.
Um, so I know you're not a component of police, right? But do you feel like there needs to be more black police officers?
No, I think they need to choose a side, if black people, black, black police officers, if they want to, um, you know, be a part of the solution, then they need to turn that badge in and they need to get out here and get in the streets, uh, with us, you know what I'm saying? I, I led a, uh, armed patrol in Highland Hills in the greens, uh, for over four months. Every day we was out there, we was armed, but the difference between us and the police, we weren't going out there being assholes, we weren't going out there looking for trouble, we weren't trying to harass people. We were just being a, a, uh, you know, an extra, you know, force in, in terms of safety and security. That's how we just want people to be safe, we ain't want old ladies to be getting robbed and shit, we, uh, we ain't want young niggas to be, you know, beefing over, you know, some, some goofy shit. So, uh, in addition to, you know, patrolling armed, we also fed the community first, we was feeding them before we came, uh, the patrol, feeding them during the patrol, all that shit. So we came with love, man, gave the whole hood diapers, man, all type of stuff, just showing that these niggas like, yeah, we different, you know what I'm saying? Yeah, we, we got guns and we kind of intimidated, but at the same time, bro, we got y'all back though, you know what I'm saying? We fuck with y'all, you know, so and that's the difference between police culture, police culture, they have that, that blue line, you know what I'm saying? They say it's a, a thin blue line between darkness, you know what I'm saying? And what's that is saying is basically nigga, everybody is basically criminals except the police, you know what I'm saying? It's the police against everybody, you know what I'm saying? And when you embed yourself with that mentality, that way of thinking, you have an Amber Geiger situation, you have a Darren Wilson situation, you have a situation where these people are supposed to be, where, where our tax dollars are supposed to be, uh, u- used, utilized to protect us, but our tax dollars are what is used to subsidize our own device, you know what I'm saying? So y'all gotta pick a side, black police officers, we ain't trying to hear that, because, yeah, we understand you gotta feed yourself, this and that and the third, I hear you, but, uh, you have commu- you have, uh, people like myself that are out there who not trying to, you know, uh, get paid off of securing each other, you know? So we ain't get paid for that, and trust me, we would have been out there longer than four months had not the chief, the former Dallas police chief Rene Hall and Tenell Atkins, my current political opponent, did not, uh, conspire together with the apartment manager to get us kicked out of departments, you know what I'm saying? That's why we only did four months, but in the four months we did, uh, patrol, brother, we were extremely successful. Anybody knows about the greens, niggas get killed over there like almost every two weeks without fail, you know what I'm saying? While we was there, nigga, ain't nobody get killed, uh, we tremendously stopped the crime, uh violent crime, you know what I'm saying? Niggas still gotta eat, you know what I'm saying? And if you in a deprived community and we don't have no alternative for you to get money, we can't tell you to stop selling drugs. I'm not finna tell you to stop selling drugs, you know what I'm saying? And feeding yourself by what the only means, so in a deprived neighborhood, you're gonna have crime, bro, you know what I'm saying? But when we funnel resources to this community, like niggas on the other side of forty five, when it turns into seventy five, when they have resources, you hear what I'm saying to you? They don't do that shit, it's, it's crime over there, that crime, they got the, with the, the blue collar crime, the, the scamming crime, the tax fraud, the mail fraud, they just have a different level of sophistication. What we do, we commit for the most part, survival crimes, you know what I'm saying? But, uh, you know, now the energy is so volatile, bro, like they've shifted the culture to where it's just some, some goofy ass stupid shit. Niggas is really killing each other and taking each other's life over disagreements, over, over females, over, you know, uh, you know, you, you live over in this zip, this zip code or this area, so I don't fuck with you, you know what I'm saying? You are op simply because your mom could afford to stay over there, simply because your grandmother grew up, uh, uh, had this house for, you know, this many decades and you grew up over there, nigga, nothing you did, you ain't no merit on your own, you know what I'm saying? It's just because your family could afford to stay over there and you, and your, y'all, their family could afford to stay over there, now we ops.
As I've grown older, I, I realize how stupid that shit is, cause sometimes, right? A person would claim a hood, claim part of town, right? But the definition you give to like claiming, your parents don't even provide, like you know what I'm saying? See your parents ain't grew up there, they just can live there, and you grew up there, you know what I'm saying? And I learned like, so like damn, like motherfuckers is really dying and fighting for no reason.
Nah, it's like literally no reason.
No reason, and that, that, that's very hard, we ended up last year with, um, a notable death of one of the notable artists that come out here, uh, Mo Three, R P him. Um, what was your reaction to that?
Man, I ain't gonna lie to you, man, I don't know that man, you know what I'm saying? But I, I was fucked up, man, I was fucked up because, um, I just started listening to him, and you know, me being from the cliff, bro, like, I just automatically sided with Trap Boy, you know what I'm saying? Just, just off the strength, and I don't even, I don't know none of them niggas, you know what I'm saying? But me being from the cliff and I know, you know, Trap Boy, uh, uh, a real, you know, street nigga, real cliff nigga, you know, hands down, I just automatically, you know, gravitated to him, you know what I'm saying? And then Mo Three, you know, me being from the cliff too, I like, I, I didn't respect them, you know, I thought the nigga's from, from another place where he ain't claiming his father's name or all this. So I, I took Mo Three just like, like entertainer, nigga full of cap, Trap Boy, you know what I'm saying, some real shit, and, uh, but you know, in August, man, like I just started listening to that nigga like two, three months, I finally gave Mo Three a chance to listen to him, like, damn, I been asleep, bro, like that nigga eating, bro, like so I'm listening, at one point, bro, he was the only artist I was listening to, bro.
Bro?
Yeah, uh, Mo Three, and then I, I, I started giving Trap Boy, I ain't even listened to Trap Boy music, you know what I'm saying? But I started giving him a chance, and then I was listening, the only people I was listening to was Mo Three and Trap Boy. And I even made a post, nigga, in like November, uh, seventh or something, like a couple of weeks before the nigga got killed, I was like, man, Trap Boy, I know, I said, I know it's too late, but Trap Boy, Yellow and, um, Mo Three could be, uh, ma- making so much more money, uh, had they, you know, if they could figure that. I said that shit, bro, like my nigga like two, three weeks later, like this nigga get killed, you know what I'm saying, behind that shit. So I was fucked up, you know what I'm saying? But at the same time, bro, like, you know what I'm saying, like shit, you know? Nigga was doing that, you know what I'm saying, doing what he was doing, so it's like, bro, like, eh, at the end of the day, bro, it would have been Trap Boy or Mo Three. So it would, you know, it wa- it was way too far gone, you know what I'm saying? It would have been one of them, so you know, shit, I was fucked up just because I grew an attachment through him, through listening to his music, but the reality, you know what I'm saying, all the, you know, the, 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 the politics, you know what I'm saying, I understand that shit too, so I can't tell niggas to feel no type of way, you know what I'm saying?
What would you, um, what would you say to maybe like young brothers watching, um, just the online posture, you know what I'm saying? Cause I feel like that's kind of what led to it, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, yeah, so, so one, I'd say, bro, like for that nigga Trap, bro, like, I understand his position and he is right. Say Mo Three killed him, then one of them niggas, Mo Three would have been doing the same motherfucking shit, I know for a fact, you know what I'm saying? I, I think I know for a fact, but my thing is like, bro, like I look at Trap Boy like he's a real gangster, you know what I'm saying? And like, for me, like, that's a certain level of respect, you know what I'm saying? I feel like, bro, you should have never stooped to another nigga level just because he did it, oh yeah, he mocking, you know what I'm saying? And he would have dished you if he killed you, whatever, but like my nigga like, like he supposed to be a, a, a man, you know what I'm saying? The man, bro, you ain't never gonna stoop to, to another level lower than you, you know what I'm saying? So for the young people watching, bro, it's like, bro, don't stoop to a nigga level, still be you, still be, you know what I'm saying, who you is regardless, you know what I'm saying? Uh, in addition to that, from my perspective, a lot of this shit kind of started off with, not started off, but, uh, it was potentials to, it was opportunities to just scrap and fight, you know what I'm saying? Before it escalated to where it was point and no return with Roy Lee and Yellow B Z, uh, I think Mo Three challenged Trap Boy to a fight, but, you know, like at the same time as well, niggas not fighting no more, niggas is not fighting no more. We wish, you know what I'm saying, I, I wish they could have scrapped that shit out, woo de woo, but niggas not doing that, you know what I'm saying? So we gotta throw that shit out the window, so I feel like, bro, for the young niggas watching, the young brothers, the young Gs, the young sisters, all that shit, uh, my nigga, if it's not worth taking out a nigga, taking his life and taking his family's life and everybody he knows, like his partner's life, then that shit really ain't worth it. Cause that's all that's gonna happen, it's gonna perpetuate a cycle, you know what I'm saying? Uh, just, just murdering and, and senseless shit, you know what I'm saying? That really could have been avoided, you know what I'm saying?
So, what do you think about some people, and I, I'll go ahead and throw you into, like, you know what I'm saying? Your buddy in uprising, what do you think about some people saying that like, the gatekeepers or you guys in position didn't stop something that? I feel like we all didn't really see it going there, but everybody wants, in hindsight, people wanna be like, y'all seen it, and now people wanna be like, well, y'all should have stopped it.
Now, I, I agree with that shit, and niggas can't say, niggas can't include me in for y'all, but, you know what I'm saying? Like even like, and we gonna talk about it, I'm glad you say that, cause that's some real shit, like, and you know, nigga, I usually don't, you know what I'm saying? Say, nah, but I really don't give a fuck, cause this some serious shit, this is some serious shit to where like, niggas' lives have been altered, bro. And you know, certain groups and organizations did the one Dallas thing and tried to bring the quote unquote, bring the both sides together, but all that shit was fake, bro. Like that shit weren't real, nigga, niggas weren't really having no real sit downs, you know what I'm saying, with niggas? Niggas were trying to make this, uh, an event and clout off this situation. So there was opportunities to try to get both parties together, but it wasn't genuine though, you know what I'm saying? So, so niggas turned the, the situation to a beef, and I don't know if you know what I'm talking about, but it was different situations, bro, where, where different, um, quote unquote OGs and all this shit, you know what I'm saying? Uh, tried to bring them together, but I don't really think they was really trying to bring them together, you know what I'm saying? And I feel like, since we talking about gatekeepers, like nigga, the blogs, nigga, the goddamn, uh, video directors, nigga, the producers, nigga, and the fans, bro, like everybody played their role into that, and, and they played their part in that shit, like niggas shouldn't share that shit, the bloggers shouldn't post that shit, nigga, stay out of, of people's beef. Uh, in addition to that, like the video niggas and the producers and the engineers, bro, like y'all hear these niggas doing that shit, it's like, one part, one part of you gotta be like, bro, like nigga, fuck this shit, I'm finna end this cycle, I'm not finna produce your shit if you on some, on, on some like, and that goes for Mo Three's side too though, you know what I'm saying? Cause he was doing the same thing, he had video niggas that's, uh, recording the diss album records and shit like that, so it's like, bro, like, if y'all going, what y'all are doing is fostering that energy, you're, you're making it visible to, to a mass audience, you know what I'm saying? You might not feel like you got the litus platform, but niggas watch your shit, you know what I'm saying? And niggas internalize your shit, you know what I'm saying? Like, niggas might, niggas might really look at Dallas retrofit, you know what I'm saying, like a few times a day, in, in just whatever narrative y'all putting out, you know what I'm saying? So it's like, my nigga, we got a responsibility on that, and even as the, and I feel Trap Boy, like he saying like, you know, with that hypocrite shit, he was like, the fans was hypocrites. They was egging that shit on, it's like, the nigga's not lying, you know what I'm saying? And, and I feel that, but I just feel like, uh, um, what I'm speaking to is the culture, you know what I'm saying? We gotta change the culture, bro, like we can't, we can't keep doing that shit, but that shit lame, it's weak, and then my, my frustration with Trap right now, even though I, I feel where he coming from, um, I just don't agree with it in the sense that, you know, you doing this for your music career, but you don't know how many young niggas look up to you. You don't know how much respect you really got, you might not really be focused on that shit, because you, you're not where you're trying to get to right now, so, uh, so you still, you know, tunnel vision on, on, on your goals and your aspirations, your dreams, and you so focused on that, that you not, not knowing, nigga, you probably got, nigga, a, a hundred thousand or more young individuals that's really living by you and, and that's, uh, partaking in your persona, cause a lot of time, like my nigga like, Gucci Mane, well, I was trying to be like Gucci Mane back in, uh, what, two thousand six, five, four, whenever that nigga came out, Waka Flocka, all of them, like so, and, and Lil Boosie. So I internalize that shit, so I'm in, uh, breaking the niggas' houses, nigga, I almost finna get my dumb ass killed, nigga, at, uh, sixteen, you know what I'm saying? Breaking into pieces of people's houses predicated on the music or in the culture, uh, the entertainment culture, you know what I'm saying, that I was, uh, submerged in, you know what I'm saying? When I kind of got out of that, you know, I, I kind of, you know, started changing a little bit, being more, uh, diverse and seeing, oh shit, it's, it's more than, than just my neighborhood, you know what I'm saying? So but anyway, bro, like, I feel like shit, the culture needs to shift and, and, and we have to have a respect for life, you know what I'm saying? Regardless, bro, if they are op or not, my nigga, I understand all that shit, bro, and I ain't telling nobody to feel sorry to, to not protect theyself and not saying like, it's not people out here that will take your life, I, I respect that, I understand that, but the reality is, bro, we gotta change, bro, like, man, it's no, for me, bro, it's no way, uh, it's no reason why Mo Three should have been still living in Dallas. Trap Boy Freddie, I feel like that nigga need to move too, not because of, he might, you know, kill and all that shit, not, not because of that, just because, I feel like, why? My nigga, it's, it's, we got a whole globe out here, fool, it's a whole nigga world out in this bitch, my nigga. You know what I'm saying, nigga, you can live in Taiwan, if you Taiwan, Taiwan, land, Taiwan, if you want to.
Or Thailand.
Yeah, or Thailand, if you want to, what are you talking about, nigga? You know what I'm saying? And, and, and still have that energy in that juice bowl, or nigga, if you wanna go to Africa or wherever the fuck you wanna go, it's a globe, my nigga. And I just feel like a lot of times the mentality we have is because we ain't never been outside of our neighborhood, like, like, I don't know if it was go, yay yo. It was somebody, it was some young nigga I was talking to, not, uh, my, uh, uh, peanut butter, I'm talking to this nigga on, yeah, I'm talking to this nigga on clubhouse, I'm kind of kicking the same shit. I'm like, bruh, like, come on, fool, like, I feel you, bro, but at what point do you change this shit? And he would kind of say in that basically like, uh, you know, he trying to make it out, you know what I'm saying? Or whatever, and I'm, I'm, I'm kicking the same shit, but I'm like, bro, like, you know, it's a whole globe out here, like, man, I ain't never been out of Fort Worth. Like that shit cool, like that shit hip hop, bro, that shit, that shit ain't cool, bro. That's not fly, that's not something to brag about, that's not something to, to, you know, be like, oh yeah, nigga, I'm real, because I ain't never been out of Stop Six, or I ain't never been out of my little neighborhood, my nigga, that shows how, how, how unexposed you are. And these white folks, these white, and I'ma keep saying them, white folk crackers, whatever you wanna call them, them niggas, they are exposed to way much more at a young age. Nigga, they go to Brazil and out the country at a young age, you hear me? They, their parents, a lot of time, not all of them, but a lot of times their parents are, are professionals, that nigga, they uncle might be a goddamn astronaut.
You know something that, um, that I, that, 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 like the COVID and the stimulus and all that showed me? I always, you know how people always like, man, if I just had a million dollars, man, or if they give me a million dollars, ah, man, I, I flip it or do, do better than that white dude or whatever, and it's like, nah, you really, you really wouldn't, cause you don't know how money works, you know what I'm saying? And then I watched the stimulus come, you know what I'm saying? And it's really, I don't know if people really understand, but it not gonna be moments like this again, and it's really supposed to be a lot of transfers of wealth.
Right.
And we saw what people did with the money.
I, I mean shit, like shit, it was a lot of transfer of wealth, you know what I'm saying, shit nigga, I, I mean, really COVID turned me up, I ain't talking about the SBA loan, we got that, just the whole situation, you know what I'm saying? But, you know what I'm saying, like, yeah, you, you right, you got your people out there that, that buy the Versace, I mean, the designer, the cars, the, the this, the that, the weed, the bows and all that shit, and they ain't got shit to show for it, you know what I'm saying? But then you do got young people like myself, you know what I'm saying, like yourself.
But we both turned up during the COVID.
You know what I'm talking about?
What it was, you know what I'm saying?
So we see, it's, it's like, and I ain't gonna hold you, but I ain't have no super deep understanding of money and all that shit, but I just knew, my nigga, I've slept outside before, bro. Um, nigga, I spent my twenty fourth and I think like my twenty sixth birthday sleeping outside, but I'm not finna do that shit no more, I don't give a fuck, you know what I'm saying? I'm not finna go back down that road, so I had to do something with them myself, you know what I'm saying? So, um, with, with that, I didn't go to school for business, I ain't, I'm learning all this shit outside, though, I think another part of it is, like you said, the, uh, not knowing, um, and, uh, not knowing, but also going back to my last point, is not being exposed, you know what I'm saying? A lot of people ain't exposed, so they don't, they, they get a million dollars, but all you know is weed, selling pussy, uh, selling drugs, uh, uh, popping bottles, going to the club. You don't know anything outside of that, yeah, it's gonna kind of be hard for you, you know what I'm saying? You just gonna go for what you know, you know what I'm saying? So that's why we gotta get, get exposed to more shit, you know what I'm saying? But look, my, my whole point about the, the dentists, the, the astronaut, the professional shit, for the white folks, my point about that was, they get a certain le- level of education just in their home, in their culture, you know what I'm saying? That we don't get, you know what I'm saying? Because our, a lot of our people aren't professionals, a lot of our people are working two, three, four goddamn jobs just to make ends meet, and we don't get to see our parents, or some of our parents are dead or, or locked up, you know what I'm saying? So we, we don't get that education or exposure to other concepts, uh, uh, Or some of our parents are dead or or locked up, you know what I'm saying, so we we don't get that education or exposure to other concepts, uh uh. You know, in in our in our home, in our family reunion, shit like that.
So would you run for city council, like, what's the platform, like, 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 what are you, you know what I'm saying, what are you running on, what are you trying to change here in Dallas? What are you aiming to see, um just, and break it down for us dummies that don't really, you know what I'm saying, know too much about politics, you know, um. A lot of people, even with that, a lot of people kind of like lost faith in politics with Obama. But I feel like, a lot of that was with um not managing expectations, you know what I'm saying, and our hopes were too high. So, like, what are you trying to do for the city, like, you know what I'm saying, what should we expect from you?
Sure, like that, that's a great question, I appreciate the uh question, uh, my shit, bro, like, I'm, man, it's, I'm, you see, like. You see, we got the pyramid, right, we got all the niggas at the bottom, you see, from from, you just know how the life is, people at the bottom, and you got a few at the top, you know what I'm saying? Turn the pyramid upside down, you hear what I'm talking about, nigga, I wanna feed the 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 most vulnerable communities, you know what I'm saying? And my district is composed of goddamn, uh uh Broadmore, over there, G Lane, Ganon Westmoreland, over there near Broadmore, preferred. All the way to uh 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 Woodtown, uh uh Highland Hills, go to Great Trinity Forest, uh Saint Augustine, the Grove. So it's a way go, all the, it's a wide district, but it's like, damn, like, uh also Red Bird Mall area, but like, my nigga, like, you mean to tell me, like, damn near this. Whole district is the hood, fool, you know what I'm saying, and then like my opponent, Tenel Atkins, this nigga, his um. His his office is located in between the pinks and the greens, I don't know if you know Highland Hills like that, but anybody that knows. These are something like the most dangerous apartment complexes in the city, you know what I'm talking about, but how is your office, nigga, in between, bro, without walking distance? Nigga, we could walk from the greens to his office to the pink, and go down to the browns and still don't be tired, you hear me, so, nigga, yo shit is right in the middle of the hood, hood, bro. Where are the resources going, they not going around your office, you hear what I'm saying to you, so, so basically, you know, my my thing is like, bro, like, these politicians. And I feel people like, nigga, people is tired of of politics, and people come into their house every two years, or or on TV every two, four years, saying what they what they gonna do. And these niggas be lying, they be cap, these jigaboo negroes, these jigaboo niggas. You, niggas, think y'all gonna beat the white man at his game, and 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 steal and line your pockets up, and at the same time, while you lining your pockets up. You were keeping resources from the from from our neighborhood, y'all are selling out to the white man of North Dallas, of Highland Park. You understand me, of Northern Dallas, uh uh y'all are selling out to them. And and letting them make decisions for our area, and these niggas don't know what the fuck going on, they don't care what's going on, they're they they have their money interest in in my. These politicians, they get an office, and what they do is they sell out and and bend their ass wide open and bust it open for the corporations. For the police unions and these big banks, you understand me, and Butter Shaw, Devonte D Peters, hell, you talking about, I ain't doing none of that. My my platform, we ain't taking money, uh not accepting money from big corporations, big banks, nor the police union, I'm accepting money from the people, I'm the people, I'm the streets, you know what I'm talking about? So we giving the streets a voice, uh uh, I I wanna show the young, the average young man, young woman, that, but it's other shit to do. We we don't have to slide, uh find out, find a op to go slide on, you know what I'm saying, like, we don't have to have that op culture, that's what I call it, it's a culture. We want to have that op culture, bro, we could really be out here taking, taking political power, I'm saying again, we could take political power. In our neighborhoods and and better than those, you know what I'm saying, and better our our environment, you know what I'm saying, me, uh, but yeah, so. So that's what I'm trying to do, but I'm trying to uh, you know, live my life and not point a finger and tell, oh, young people, you doing this, you doing that, blah, 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 blah. I'm I'm walking as an example, and I'm leading the way, you know what I'm saying, so I wanna show these young people, like, look, look at me. I can do it, I talk the way I talk, I look the way I look, there's no reason why you can't uh do the same thing. It ain't like I'm the most educated uh nigga in the world, you know what I'm saying, I'm not, you know what I'm saying, even though I do study up in college and that, you know what I'm talking about? You know what I'm saying, ain't gonna say I'm dumb or whatever, but I'm just saying, like, it, none of that shit matter, bro, uh. Uh people trying to downplay me because I ain't take political science in school and stuff, and I don't have a political background, but like I said, like, that's what we need. If Donald Trump can grab him by the pussy, then Devonte D Peters can goddamn me, you know what I'm saying, really get up there and do my thing with my locks. And don't let them get in me office, cause my first paycheck the city paid me with, I'm finna get nothing but goatee.
So kinda, how did you get into like the um the health and wellness and then opening your own location? It was, I think the first time I seen that thing you was standing, you just had all the flavors on the on the chalkboard, you know what I'm saying? I thought it was like a pop-up shop, but then, from then, I just seen more promotion, more promotion, promotion, so when did you kind of start with that idea, and how did you kind of get into that?
Man, just to be honest, bro, and. Be honest, bro, like, you know what I'm saying, I don't normally talk about my situation, but like I said, I I I lead by example, so, you know, we got normalized, you know, talking about our shit, and. Just to be honest, but like, my mom and my dad, like, my my mom and my dad died when I was young, man, you know what I'm saying, my mom died when I was three, pops died when I was seventeen. Nice, you know, he he ain't had nothing to do with that, you know what I'm saying, but I appreciate it, though, but look, so they died over cancer and shit, you know what I'm saying? And like, you know, at the time, you know, I was like, bro, like, that shit is genetic, cancer runs in my genes, so shit, I'm next up, you feel me? But through my studying, I I eventually learned, it it was, you know, it's a year, years process, you know what I'm saying, it wasn't no overnight quick thing, but I learned that. You know, what's more passed down than bad genetics is your 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 lifestyle, your diet, your your traditions, your culture. And through our traditions, our culture and our diet is where we get, um, you know, these different diseases uh from uh diabetes, stroke. Cancer, uh high blood pressure, that's not passed down to your genes for real, it's really, you know, our culture. We got that soul food shit, when we know a goddamn well, ain't nothing soul about that goddamn soul food, you know what I'm talking about, soul food, it ain't S U. Excuse me, S O U L, it's S O L E, nigga, that's the the bottom, they gave us food from the bottom, you know what I'm talking about, and and we being living beings. How you gonna put something in your body and expecting life from it, but it puts you to sleep? If it puts you to sleep, that means it's taking energy away from you, you know what I'm saying, so when we eat, we supposed to get, and we supposed to get a surge of energy, you know what I'm saying? We supposed to continue to go, cause food is fuel, you know what I'm talking about, so anyway, bro, I ain't, you know what I'm saying, like, so. My personal situation is what might motivated me and inspired me to to not go out like that, cause I felt like, if my mom died when she was like, what, like thirty three? And my pops died when he was like, like fifty four, you know what I'm saying, me, uh a couple weeks after his birthday, like, I felt like I would have failed him. So I got a little longer than him, you know what I'm saying, and so through my studying, I learned, you know, I learned the game, and and fortunately, I came across somebody like Dr. Sabi. Who uh who finally made sense through my journey, bro, another part of it was, you know, I'm I'm looking for this information. But I'd never seen anybody who looked like me or who spoke like me, I'd never seen no nigga from no hood nigga talking about health and shit, you know what I'm saying? And they using these big ass words, these big ass words, I got positive video, I gotta look at what the fuck this shit mean, and then come back to the video, so it was just so. Crazy, bro, but eventually, I was like, my nigga, I I notice people out there like me, that wanna hear this shit from somebody like myself, so, you know, shit, the rest was history, bro, just. Start turn uh made a YouTube channel, the alkaline hour, and I stayed down with this shit, man, like, I really started that shit like, like twenty sixteen, you know what I'm saying? As far as the YouTube uh stuff, and just, you know, recently, it just kind of finally, you know, kind of worked for me, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, I'm glad to see that, um, so I was doing the research a few weeks back, um, I didn't, I didn't know about Sandy branch.
Oh, look, my man, let me plug, uh, so, yeah, now I got the alkaline health store, alkaline hour store, it's T H A alkaline hour. We located forty four fourteen South March, that's we right there in Glendale, we right there in the hood, you know what I'm talking about, Glendale Shopping Center, man, pull up, big C Moss, big herb. Herbal Smokes, CBD, if you trying to put down a cigarette, uh uh if you a brother that can't get your thang up. We got some stuff to get your thang up, you know what I'm saying, keep your relationship intact, you feel me, so, anyway, I had to plug that in, man.
Um, so, uh, a few weeks ago, reported about Sandy branch, is it Sam branch, or Sandy's, Sam branch? Um, reported about them and just, um, it was cool for me to learn, I, I, it was crazy, cause I drive a used on time, and it's like, I would never. Just completely oblivious about just the history of the area, um, just them not having water, the unincorporated area. I still don't even get what unincorporated is too much.
It didn't mean it's not officially a part of Dallas, so basically Dallas is not responsible to uh give them money, basically.
So how do we, how do things become co- I guess, co- incorporated or incorporated?
How do things become incor- incorporated, um, to be honest, bro, I don't really know, you know what I'm saying, I don't have the exact answer. Uh to that, I'm not gonna lie, but I feel like, uh, you know, the people, uh when there is like a mass movement of people. Uh urging the the this, well, I think it's the county at that point, this is Dallas County, they have to urge the county, uh you know, to. To, you know, to share share love to that, to that place, you know what I'm saying, so, um. So, yeah, but but the reality, bro, I feel like is, you know, this is a a historically black community, you feel me, um, so, you know, what they're doing is. They're waiting for these people to die out, and once they die out, and or sell up their land and move, then they're gonna bring resources there. So that's what they do to black communities, you know what I'm saying, um, you know, furthermore, even not just Sam branch, but even Highland Hills, you know what I'm saying, I'm on the uh. Uh lane plate and community advisory group, uh John Wiley probably pointed me to that, long story short, that's, it's it's a site in Highland Hills off uh Bonnie View. Um, that's very toxic, it's one of the most toxic sites in America, and it's right there in Highland Hills, nigga, you come walk. Anybody know what College Park in Highland Hills is, it's right there, you know what I'm talking about, for over ninety years, nigga, they been dumping poison chemicals. It was a chrome plate, they put chrome on on vehicles or or metals, and they dump these chemicals in in the uh in the area, you know what I'm saying, over ninety years, that. Well, you know what I'm talking about, and nobody really knows this, but it's affecting the the the, you know, the air. They they, the EPA wanna lie and cap like it's not really affecting people, but I'm on their ass, you know what I'm saying, so Devonte Peters, I got a people vet, you hear me? But, um, but yeah, so it's like, but this, uh also, uh that's in my district, also Shingle Mountain, there's a lady by the name of Marsha Jackson, shout out to her. Cause she's a super duper fighter, nigga, they dump a mountain of toxic shingles, like shingles for the houses. They dumped a mountain, imagine, nigga, one day, somebody dumping, a company dumping, just like a pile of shit in your backyard, literally in her backyard, your backyard. And it, it just never stopped to where it's a nigga, a mountain, nigga, like a thirty foot motherfucking. Bigger than thirty feet mountain of toxic shit, and the woman is having health problems. Finally, they finally got it removed, but this shit has been over there for, you know, a long ass time, you know what I'm saying? Predicated upon Tenel Atkins, my opponent, his relationship at SMU, and he letting this SMU, his boys, come over here and shit on. Uh this woman's backyard, but long story short, I'm saying all this to say, excuse me, uh also the lead, um, lead situation in West Dallas. Um, what they do is they shit on the southern sector, they shit on predominantly black communities, you know what I'm talking about? Uh with environmental racism, that's another point, what we doing is, uh, we combating environmental racism in the southern sector. Don't shit in our neighborhoods, if we if we gonna shit somewhere, nigga, we gonna shit in North Dallas, and I don't mean it's like our daily enforcement, I'm talking. I'm talking about, nigga, uh Carrollton Farmer's Branch, goddamn, uh, I don't think South Lake Carroll is in Dallas, I don't give a fuck, we shitting on them too, guy you talking about. You know what I'm saying, so, if y'all don't want this shit in your backyard, don't put it in yours, and and put it in ours, but so historically, even with Joppy. Joppy was the first black community in Dallas, in Dallas, uh after, you know, slavery or whatever, the reconstruction period, you got Joppy, you had Black Egypt. You have other places too, but uh long story short, they put a concrete uh plant over there, you know what I'm saying, which gave gave people jobs, but nigga. We breathing that, we breathing that concrete, you know what I'm saying, so, the environmental racism, bro, is real, that's a motherfucking, people don't take in consideration. That when when you look at niggas from West Dallas, or who grew up there, they got a lot of health health issues, and they're a lot more, um. At one time, when I was in juvenile and going to jail and shit, like, it was a lot of young niggas from West Dallas in that bitch, and they look different, they look like, it's like. I can probably tell this nigga's from West Dallas, you know what I'm saying, but you know, autism and and your mentality is gonna change, be altered. Due to the chemicals that's in your shit, just like a flink flick situation, that's a predominantly black area, so this is like nothing new. This is his a historic strategy that these niggas have done, or these crackers have done, and these jigaboo niggas have sold out to these white folks, knowing it's going on. You hear me, and, you know, unfortunately, man, they they sell out, so, you know, that's the difference between me, that's why we need young people, that's why we need y'all viewers, these young niggas that's watching. To do something different, man, run for office, so we can take political power, so we can incorporate a Sam branch, so we can uh uh, you know, not dump. Toxic chemicals in our own backyard, you know what I'm saying, we can do something innovative and really, uh, you know, change the mode and change the history and the destiny of our people.
That's real, um, so on our way out, um, have you become acquainted with, um, Charleston White? What's what's, what's your take on his message?
Man, I'm doing all this positive shit, you know what I'm saying? Fuck that cracker, he's a cracker, and I'm gonna tell you why, he's a cracker, are you familiar with the Dallas Nine? Okay, I was a part of the Dallas Nine, okay, when I got out of jail, you had WFFA, you had BET. You had Charleston White, waiting on us to get out of jail, do you know what this nigga told me? Man, we fuck with y'all, we love y'all, nigga, you the realest, nigga, nigga, Fort Worth, nigga fucking with y'all, nigga, that nigga showed me big love, nigga, I know who the fuck that nigga was. But I'm like, nigga, I'm the street, I'm the pimp, so I'm like, yeah, my nigga, fuck, I'm giving this nigga a hug, showing that nigga stupid love, right? You know what I'm saying, and then my nigga, a few months later, bro, like, nigga, like, I be so so tapped into my shit, a few months later, I'm getting phone calls. That like, but like, you know, Charleston White, I'm like, you know, shit, I really didn't know who he was, I I didn't know him by name at that time. And I'm like, yeah, he on, he on Facebook Live talking about you, I'm like, what? So I finally look up, look up, look him up on Facebook, and and, you know, what, now, I tell them to send me the video. Send me the video, you talking about me, I watch this long ass shit, I'm like, damn, bro, how you talking about me, bro, like, I only met you one time. You feel me, I met you one time, and the the time I did meet you, my nigga, you was showing me stupid love, so that shit was crazy, like, that nigga calling me bro, nigga. That nigga uh hating on me, talking about, oh yeah, ain't no nigga ever got a rich selling C Moss, nigga, you out there uh begging for a a ride to go to uh. To uh uh Beaumont, 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 where the uh Pamela. Pam, I forgot her last name, but the lady that got killed uh in Houston, uh it was really Beaumont, uh in Houston. Um by the by the cop or the the security guard in her apartment, I don't know if y'all remember that, Trade the Troopers out there showing love, you know, but we was, I I was asking for donations, nigga, I was, bro, I ain't had no money, nigga. Ain't nobody getting paid off for no activist shit, you know what I'm saying, I was doing that activist shit full time, nigga, and I was sleeping outside, nigga, like homeless, nigga, while I still. You know, standing up and doing activist shit, but, you know, um, I did ask for money, you know what I'm saying, to to get down there, cause like, shit, I ain't have no job, nigga, so. Nigga, if y'all want the real news, you can use, nigga, send me out there and people donate it, like, nigga, I got a, I want large following, niggas are comfortable donating to me, you know what I'm saying? They know, like, I'm really gonna do right with the money, so, nigga, I get out there, woo de woo, but this is some of the fuel that nigga uses, oh, he begging for money. Blah, 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 to get out there, so anyway, but that nigga just hatin', bro, and then he gonna talk about my C Moss, talk about my store, so I know you watching me. But uh, then he gonna come back and say, nigga, I got these socks, nigga, I got these socks from goddamn Harry Heinz, nigga, I'm making money, that's true, nigga, come on, I just hate that shit, bro. Cause the reality is one, bro, we got a hatin' culture in Dallas, I know the nigga from Fort Worth, so I'm sure Fort Worth and Dallas ain't too far off. When it comes to hatin' and nigga shit, you know what I'm saying, so one, nigga, you, we gotta end this hatin' culture. Nigga, respect me, nigga, say, say Devonte Peters, nigga, Butter Shaw inspired you, nigga, you know what I'm saying, to do what you do, you know what I'm saying, I'm a, I'm. I'm doing at my age what you wanted to do at my age, you know what I'm saying, what you trying to do now, quote unquote, you know what I'm saying, so, nigga, big me up, nigga, don't hate, you know what I'm talking about? And try to tear me down to your audience, you feel me, when you could really be uplifting me, or if you felt like something I was doing was out of pocket as a man, or a. As a man, or a elder, or a fellow activist, or whatever, nigga.